Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, October 15th and we have some presentations to begin before the official meeting of the City Council begins. So at this point I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Jan Perry for our first presentation today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm standing here today with Jeremy Strick of the Museum of Contemporary Art to celebrate a milestone in the history of Moca as many of us know Moca, the museum on Grand Avenue. Moca's achievements in the last 25 years have brought remarkable contributions to the city of Los Angeles. These achievements include landmark buildings, a 5,000 work collection comprising some of the greatest masterworks of contemporary art, exhibitions that continually change and redefine our understanding of art's recent history and its future, and education programs that are designed to open the minds of children and adults to the power of creative expression. And I know that firsthand because many of the seniors from the 9th District have been able to enjoy some of these programs by the museum and they are free and no cost to the public. Moca was founded in 1979 by a remarkable coalition of civic and government leaders, artists, and private citizens who shared a dream for a new contemporary art museum in Los Angeles. Under the stewardship of Tom Bradley, the former mayor of Los Angeles, the coalition secured funding and a location in downtown Los Angeles, making their dream a reality. It has presented world-class exhibitions organized from its renowned collection of the finest examples of contemporary art. In total, over 270 exhibitions have been presented at Moca. Over 100,000 schoolchildren have had meaningful Moca experiences. Contemporary Art Start, which was founded in 1985, was one of the first programs in the country to use the classroom setting to introduce contemporary art and culture to elementary and middle school students and teachers. In the last 25 years, Los Angeles has become a nexus of contemporary art, music, and culture. Moca plays a very vital and central role in this community. It is both important and impressive to note that 6 million visitors have come through their doors to date. So as a show of gratitude and appreciation, the city joins in the celebration of Moca's numerous contributions and acknowledges its outstanding role in the community and at its 25th anniversary party this coming Sunday as part of the Grand Avenue Festival. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I would like to join in recognizing the accomplishments and contributions of Moca and join in celebrating its 25th anniversary. And we'll take a picture in the back, but I'd like for Jeremy, give him a big hand. And if Jeremy, just say a few words.
Councilmember Perry, thank you so much for those words, for this proclamation. It's a great privilege to be here on behalf of Moca. As you said, Moca was founded as a public-private partnership between the city of Los Angeles, civic leaders, artists, supporters of the arts. Over the past 25 years, Moca, through this support, has been able to achieve many of the aspirations, indeed, many ways we believe exceed the dreams of its founders. And today, we're looking forward to another 25 extraordinary years in which Moca, with Los Angeles, helps to make our community absolutely one of the world's centers of creativity. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you leave, Jeremy, before you leave, we have some council members that would like to make a few remarks. Councilmember Reyes.
I just wanted to rise and thank you for your hard work and all your contributions. And thank Jan Perry for leadership, bringing you to City Hall and acknowledging your great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jeremy, I want to add my congratulations for the 25 years. It's an incredible accomplishment and a wonderful, I think, place for our city to share in art. And just thank you and look forward to the celebration on Sunday. Thanks, Jan. Now, I've asked Jeremy to stay here and want him to be joined by Mindy Rosen, the Downtown Center Business Improvement District, David Stork, the General Manager of the Patina Group, Josefine Ramirez, Vice President of Programming for the Music Center. The reason I've asked these individuals to join Jeremy here is because we have a wonderful event taking place in the heart of downtown Los Angeles this weekend. This Sunday, October 17th, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. is the Grand Avenue Festival and Annual Taste of Downtown. Grand Avenue, which is rapidly becoming the gathering spot for the city of Los Angeles for all kinds of celebrations and festivals, will be closed between First and Third Streets to make room for 12 downtown restaurants selling great food for $5 or less. There will be free Los Angeles Philharmonic organ concerts inside the Walt Disney Concert Hall, free performances inside the Red Cat Theater, free opera performances at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion, and admission to Moca is free too. This is a wonderful opportunity for everyone to come to Grand Avenue, enjoy and experience Grand Avenue, and all of the cultural opportunities that it has to offer all of us here in the city. And I really hope that everyone will take advantage of this great opportunity. And if any of you would like to say a few words, you okay?
Hi, I'm Josefine Ramirez with the Music Center. I'm also co-chair of the Grand Avenue Festival. I just want to take this opportunity to make sure that everyone understands, this is the first time we're doing this. It's been like herding cats, you know, 11 large, substantial, and very, very complicated organizations who are devoting themselves to giving back to the community and wanting everyone to sort of take advantage of the fact that these are your institutions. They're public institutions, and we want to have this opportunity to share in a free venue and a free day for everyone, and we hope everyone will come.
Hi, I'm Mindy Rosen with the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. On behalf of the 450 downtown property owners who represent the bid, I want to invite all of you in all of Southern California to this wonderful festival on Sunday. We're very proud to be part of it and believe that it's a wonderful way to show off downtown L.A.
I'm David Stork with the Patina Group and representing Joakim Spishal. I just want to invite everybody to the Grand Avenue. The festival will celebrate food as well as art, as well as culture, and I really hope that we can feed everybody well.
If you could wait, we'll go take a picture in the back. Thank you very much. The next individual I'd like to call here is James Barthollet. James is here. Okay, James, come on up. It's a pleasure to welcome James here today and to congratulate him on his 15th anniversary of a television program he has here in Los Angeles. It's called LA Nightlife. And for the last 15 years, LA Nightlife has been informing and entertaining the public on where to go and what to do in Los Angeles. LA Nightlife and James have been a constant force in promoting tourism in Los Angeles. James is also a very staunch advocate of not only promoting tourism but understanding the nightlife, and he has been a very strong advocate on behalf of safe sex practices and working hard to prevent drug usage in nightclubs throughout Los Angeles through public service announcements and special programs in individual nightclubs. The LA Nightlife with the James Barthollet website is a cornucopia of information that helps to inform visitors and residents about the many things to do and see throughout Los Angeles. Besides encouraging tourism, the program also encourages local residents to go out and discover and rediscover this great city for themselves. James is always working hard for charity groups or with charity groups on all sorts of issues from AIDS Project Los Angeles, ALS Los Angeles, animal rescue, Toys for Tots, Heal the Bay, and many more. So today, I wanted to congratulate LA Nightlife and James Barthollet on its 15th anniversary here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Perry and all of the other council members. I just want to say I love L.A.! Yes! I love L.A.! This is the greatest city in the nation! So it is such a pleasure to do this show for the last 15 years, to tell everybody all over the world that this is the best city to come down and visit, and tell my fellow Angelinos there is great stuff to do. You don't have to make it a blockbuster night. You could go out. We have so many wonderful restaurants, and especially here downtown. Jan and I met downtown in an event that we were doing in Little Tokyo, and we were hoping so much that we can get the word out to get people that live here in town to get out and discover Los Angeles again, discover the many restaurants and venues, wonderful nightlife that we have.
A 5,000 work collection comprising some of the greatest masterworks of contemporary art, exhibitions that continually change and redefine our understanding of art's recent history and its future, and education programs that are designed to open the minds of children and adults to the power of creative expression. And I know that firsthand because many of the seniors from the Ninth District have been able to enjoy some of these programs by the museum, and they are free and no cost to the public. Moca was founded in 1979 by a remarkable coalition of civic and government leaders, artists, and private citizens who shared a dream for a new contemporary art museum in Los Angeles. Under the stewardship of Tom Bradley, the former mayor of Los Angeles, the coalition secured funding and a location in downtown Los Angeles, making their dream a reality. It has presented world-class exhibitions organized from its renowned collection of the finest examples of contemporary art. In total, over 270 exhibitions have been presented at Moca. Over 100,000 schoolchildren have had meaningful Moca experiences. Contemporary Art Start, which was founded in 1985, was one of the first programs in the country to use the classroom setting to introduce contemporary art and culture to elementary and middle school students and teachers. In the last 25 years, Los Angeles has become a nexus of contemporary art, music, and culture. Moca plays a very vital and central role in this community. It is both important and impressive to note that 6 million visitors have come through their doors to date. So as a show of gratitude and appreciation, the city joins in the celebration of Moca's numerous contributions and acknowledges its outstanding role in the community and at its 25th anniversary party this coming Sunday as part of the Grand Avenue Festival. So on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I would like to join in recognizing the accomplishments and contributions of Moca and join in celebrating its 25th anniversary. And we'll take a picture in the back, but I'd like for Jeremy, give him a big hand. And if Jeremy, just say a few words.
Councilmember Perry, thank you so much for those words, for this proclamation. It's a great privilege to be here on behalf of Moca. As you said, Moca was founded as a public-private partnership between the City of Los Angeles, civic leaders, artists, supporters of the arts. Over the past 25 years, Moca, through this support, has been able to achieve many of the aspirations, indeed, many ways we believe exceed the dreams of its founders. And today, we're looking forward to another 25 extraordinary years in which Moca with Los Angeles helps to make our community absolutely one of the world's centers of creativity. Thank you.
Thank you. But before you leave, Jeremy, before you leave, we have some council members that would like to make a few remarks. Councilmember Reyes.
I just wanted to rise and thank you for your hard work and all your contributions, and thank John Perry for leadership, bringing you to City Hall and acknowledging your great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Jeremy, I want to add my congratulations for the 25 years. It's an incredible accomplishment and a wonderful, I think, place for our city to share in art. And just thank you and look forward to the celebration on Sunday. Thanks, Jim.
Now, I've asked Jeremy to stay here and want him to be joined by Mindy Rosen, the Downtown Center Business Improvement District, David Stork, the general manager of the Patina Group, Josephine Ramirez, Vice President of Programming for the Music Center. The reason I've asked these individuals to join Jeremy here is because we have a wonderful event taking place in the heart of downtown Los Angeles this weekend. This Sunday, October the 17th, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. is the Grand Avenue Festival and Annual Taste of Downtown. Grand Avenue, which is rapidly becoming the gathering spot for the City of Los Angeles for all kinds of celebrations and festivals, will be closed between First and Third Streets to make room for 12 downtown restaurants selling great food for $5 or less. There will be free Los Angeles Philharmonic organ concerts inside the Walt Disney Concert Hall, free performances inside the Red Cat Theater, free opera performances at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion, and admission to Moca is free, too. This is a wonderful opportunity for everyone to come to Grand Avenue, enjoy and experience Grand Avenue, and all of the cultural opportunities that it has to offer all of us here in the city. And I really hope that everyone will take advantage of this great opportunity. And if any of you would like to say a few words, you okay?
Hi, I'm Josephine Ramirez with the Music Center. I'm also co-chair of the Grand Avenue Festival. I just want to take this opportunity to make sure that everyone understands, this is the first time we're doing this. It's been like herding cats, you know, 11 large, substantial, and very, very complicated organizations who are devoting themselves to giving back to the community and wanting everyone to sort of take advantage of the fact that these are your institutions, they're public institutions, and we want to have this opportunity to share in a free venue and a free day for everyone, and we hope everyone will come.
Thank you. Do you want to say anything?
Hi, I'm Mindy Rosen with the Downtown Center Business Improvement District. On behalf of the 450 downtown property owners who represent the bid, I want to invite all of you in all of Southern California to this wonderful festival on Sunday. We're very proud to be part of it and believe that it's a wonderful way to show off downtown L.A.
I'm David Stork with the Patina Group and representing Joakim Spishal. I just want to invite everybody to the Grand Avenue. The festival will celebrate food as well as art, as well as culture, and I really hope that we can feed everybody well.
If you could wait, and then we'll go take a picture in the back. All right, thank you very much. The next individual I'd like to call here is James Barthollet. James is here, okay, James, come on up. It's a pleasure to welcome James here today and to congratulate him on his 15th anniversary of a television program he has here in Los Angeles. It's called L.A. Nightlife. And for the last 15 years, L.A. Nightlife has been informing and entertaining the public on where to go and what to do in Los Angeles. L.A. Nightlife and James have been a constant force in promoting tourism in Los Angeles. James is also a very staunch advocate of not only promoting tourism but understanding the nightlife, and he has been a very strong advocate on behalf of safe sex practices and working hard to prevent drug usage in nightclubs throughout Los Angeles through public service announcements and special programs in individual nightclubs. The L.A. Nightlife with the James Barthollet website is a cornucopia of information that helps to inform visitors and residents about the many things to do and see throughout Los Angeles. Besides encouraging tourism, the program also encourages local residents to go out and discover and rediscover this great city for themselves. James is always working hard for charity groups or with charity groups on all sorts of issues from AIDS Project Los Angeles, ALS Los Angeles, Animal Rescue, Toys for Tots, Heal the Bay, and many more. So today, I wanted to congratulate L.A. Nightlife and James Barthollet on its 15th anniversary here in the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Take a minute.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Perry and all of the other council members. I just want to say, I love L.A. Yes, I love L.A. This is the greatest city in the nation. So it is such a pleasure to do this show for the last 15 years, to tell everybody all over the world that this is the best city to come down and visit, and tell my fellow Angelinos, there is great stuff to do. You don't have to make it a blockbuster night. You could go out. That we have so many wonderful restaurants, and especially here downtown. Jan and I met downtown in an event that we were doing in Little Tokyo, and we were hoping so much that we can get the word out to get people that live here in town to get out and discover Los Angeles again, discover the many restaurants and venues, wonderful nightlife that we have, wonderful special events. And it's so great to be able to provide this to the community and also to try to tell the kids when they go out to the clubs, be safe when they go out there. And the kids can, we really can. We hope to get that happening to the kids, and I think we're starting to see that. So thank you all so much. It's a pleasure to be doing this service here for the community, and once again, I love L.A.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, I'd like to call Bill Martinez and the California State University Los Angeles Gang Intervention Class graduates to please join us. Come on up here. And we are going to, I'm going to give them their certificates in the back so we can have a nice photograph, but I will honor them by saying their names on the record here for Channel 35 so their families can enjoy it later. Come on over here, Bill. This is Bill Martinez. He is a teacher-professor at the Cal State University of Los Angeles who teaches a very, very, very important class that I believe is transforming our communities one person at a time. Bill's class focuses on gang intervention strategies and teaches students how to work within communities and to help younger people explore alternatives to a gang lifestyle. This class teaches mediation and intervention techniques. The people here behind me have successfully completed what I consider to be a transforming experience, an educational experience. They now have the skills to go back to their communities and not just help their families, help other young people and other individuals find alternatives to violence and other dangerous activities associated with gangs in Los Angeles. And I want to say congratulations to each and every one of them because they've made such a tremendous commitment to making a positive impact in their neighborhoods. And I just want to say their names. This is Anthony Adams, Gerardo Betagon, Anthony Bolyu, Bill Burgess, Willie Cleveland, Michael Cummings, Shakar Fuqua, Michael Garcia, Armando Gonzalez, Danny Gallart, Alton Hansi, Jose Lopez, Imoli Mendez, Antoine Monroe, Kevin Mitchell, Reginald Sims, and Juan Torres. And I'd really appreciate it if you would all just give them a big hand. Did I miss anybody? Okay, and then if you would, I'd like to have the professor say a few words.
On behalf of the Pat Brown Institute in Cal State L.A., I want to thank the council member and the rest of the council for your continued support for this program. We're about to enter our fifth year of providing services, and in that time, we've trained over 125 individuals to go back and serve their communities, hopefully making it better not only for the youth but for the rest of the community. And again, I just want to thank you all for your support.
And I think it's extremely important that as a body, we affirm people when they make what we would call the right choices to reclaim their lives and bring peace to all of our communities, particularly as some of us tomorrow will be attending the funeral on behalf of the 14-year-old child Byron Lee Jr., who was so heinously murdered just last week. So I want to say, as you're right, executed, he was executed, that I want to say that we should affirm them again and all of these individuals behind us, not only for Bill for what he does, but to say to these men that we believe in you and that you did make the right choice and that we recognize that and want to affirm you and support you as you progress and take peace back into your own street, your own block, and into your own homes. So bless you and thank you, and thank you, Bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Our next presentation this morning will be Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Good morning, Madam President. Good morning, colleagues and our viewers on Channel 35. Gives me a great honor this morning to be able to present to you and to recognize two gentlemen who are visiting our city from Japan today. Mr. Taizo Nishimura, who is the chairman of Toshiba. I'm sure there's plenty of Toshiba equipment in this chamber today and some of the TVs that folks are watching at home, I'm sure, are Toshiba. And Mr. Osamu Watanabe, who is chairman of Jetro, which we'll get to in one second. I wanted to thank the mayor's office, Aloisa Clementic, and the hospitality that the city has provided these two gentlemen in the last few days here in Los Angeles. Mr. Taizo Nishimura, who's the chairman of Toshiba, is not a stranger to Los Angeles. Previously, he lived here in Southern California, so we want to welcome you home here, to your second home. Yesterday, he spoke about Japanese business relationships and opportunities that highlight the changes and the challenge and some of the new opportunities which exist in the intertwined economies and cultures of the Pacific region, specifically between Los Angeles and the United States of America. The interdependent economies that we have and the common destiny that we share is so important and so well articulated. The Japan External Trade Organization, Jetro, in conjunction with the U.S. Department of State, yesterday had this seminar at the Biltmore. Mr. Nishimura was born in Yamanashi Prefecture in 1935, graduated from Keio University with a degree in economics in 1961, and he joined Toshiba that same year. And he's really built his career throughout a single company, something that is increasingly more difficult to do in our economy but quite impressive to see. He began in sales and marketing, and he began to originally market semiconductors, which now Toshiba is recognized as a world leader in the semiconductor market. On becoming president and CEO of Toshiba in 1996, Mr. Nishimura initiated sweeping reforms that continue within the company today. They're designed to assure that Toshiba remains a strong force in the world economy and became chairman of Toshiba in July of 2000, a post that he still holds today. The career that he has in business that includes 14 years of residence here in the United States has served him very well in the many posts that he holds outside of Toshiba. He was appointed vice chairman of the Japan Business Federation in 2001, chairman of the Japan-U.S. Business Council in 2002. And in the same year, he was invited to become a commissioner of the International Labor Organization's World Commission on the Social Dimension of Globalization, probably the largest challenge that this world faces today. In 2003, I'm sorry, and he also co-chaired the U.S.-Japan Private Investment, Private Sector Government Commission. In 2003, he accepted an invitation to become a member of the informal business advisory body to the WTO Director General, a very prestigious post as well. And as a noted reformer, he was appointed to chair the Japan Government's Council for Decentralization Reform. It's kind of like during secession, talking about boroughs here. In his leisure time, Mr. Nishimura enjoys reading Chinese classics, music, and fine arts, and he's married to Keiko, who is here with us as well, and they have two daughters. Before speaking about Mr. Watanabe, will you please join me in a round of applause for the Nishimuros and welcome them back to Los Angeles? Mr. Osamu Watanabe is chairman and chief executive of Jetro. He, after joining the Ministry of International Trade and Industry in 1964, has held several directorship posts and was seconded to Jetro as executive director of the organization's New York office. In 1987, he became executive assistant to then Prime Minister Noburo Takashita. And later, he was Director General of several key MITI, which is really the most powerful of all of the agencies and Japanese government bureaus, including the Trade Administration, Machinery and Information Industries, and Industrial Policy. He was administrative vice minister of MITI from 1997 to 1999, and then was appointed to the president's, sorry, the prime minister's task force on foreign relations. He became Jetro's chairman and CEO in July of 2002, and he graduated from the University of Tokyo with a law degree. During this conference that we've had here in Los Angeles, Jetro chairman Osamu Watanabe also addressed the crowd and was able to speak to folks that were there. Jetro was created originally to provide business opportunities for companies who want to export products to Japan. So for the American businesses, the 50,000 people who on average are watching this television channel, we encourage you to connect with Jetro. The purpose of the Japanese Ministry of Economy is to also, sorry, Economy, Trade, and Industry was to address the trade balance between Japan and the United States, and therefore they created Jetro. After years, just a couple of words. Well, first, will you please also welcome Mr. Watanabe to our chambers and to Los Angeles? Before we hear from them as well, I just want to say, after years of struggle and restructuring of the economy, Japan has gone through some painful years in their economy. It's finally on the path towards sustained economic growth. Just as our growth is so important to Japan, Japan's growth is very important to us as well. As a hub and a gateway really to Asia and to neighboring Asian countries, Japan offers global growth potential that is critical to U.S. companies as well as other worldwide companies seeking a base of information, sorry, of access in trying to get into these markets. So with that, I'd like to present these certificates of welcome, signed by council colleague Tom Labansch, who unfortunately, a last-minute emergency could not be here today, but our council president Alex Padilla and the mayor Jim Hahn have signed these. We'd like to present these to you today. So let me get these. First to Mr. Nishimura, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And also then to Mr. Watanabe.
Thank you very much, Councilman Eric Garcetti and entire city council members. It really is a great honor for me to have this citation and certificate out here in Los Angeles. Toshiba, I still work for Toshiba over 40 odd years and opened up a very small office, three people, in Los Angeles back in 1967. And since then, our operation in the United States and also in the state of California has increased tremendously. And currently, we have by excess of $30 billion in sales. And out here in the United States, we employ approximately 13,000 people. And we are very grateful that Los Angeles gave us one with a foothold in the very early days of our expansion into the United States and for the creation of U.S.-Japan relationship. And we have created a great many joint ventures with U.S. companies. And thank you, thank you for this honor, and thank you, Los Angeles. Toshiba is very grateful for Los Angeles. Thank you.
And Mr. Watanabe.
I thank Mayor, Mayor James Hahn, Councilman Garcetti, and entire council members. I'm very honored to be here today. And Los Angeles, Jetro, there are about 20 people working here as a citizen of Los Angeles. As chairman of Jetro, I'd like to make effort to promote two ways trade and investment between City of Los Angeles and Japan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Our next presentation is by Councilmember Martin Ludlow.
I'm going to ask my colleague, Councilmember Vera Gosa, who will be joining us as well, to join me here at the podium. Thank you, Madam President. Muslims will be celebrating the holy month of Ramadan beginning tomorrow, Saturday, October 16th. The holy month of Ramadan lasts for a full 30 days. It's a time when Muslims concentrate on strengthening familial and community ties through fasting, prayer, worship, charity, and contemplation. It is my pleasure to join with my colleague to present this resolution in honor of the holy month of Ramadan to the representatives that stand here with us. These individuals are leaders who represent a coalition of various organizations within the City of Los Angeles' Muslim community. They exemplify the true faith and teachings of Islam. Through their service, they have worked passionately and diligently to improve the quality of life for all Angelinos regardless of race or religion. Such services include, but are certainly not limited to, feeding the homeless on skid row, providing free medical services to the community, working toward the prevention of gang violence, participating in interfaith projects, working with federal law enforcement agencies on many issues, not the least of which is fighting terrorism. And they have provided a voice for civil rights and human rights throughout the City of Los Angeles. Joining us today are Imam Abdul Karim Hassan and Deborah Hassan of the Bilal Islamic Center, Dafir Dakil of the Masjid Omar Foundation, Donald Bakir of Project Islamic Helping Oppressed People Everywhere, Najee Ali of Project Islamic Hope, Sherrell Johnson of the Council of American Islamic Relations, members of the Latino Muslim Association, members of the Islamic Center of Southern California, staff from the Muslim, excuse me, University Muslim Medical Association Free Clinic, and staff from the Islamic Learning Media Foundation. The City of Los Angeles, and we're joined by every member of the council, including the mayor and our city attorney and city controller presenting this resolution. We're excited about presenting this resolution, and we hope that it extends a small token of our gratification and gratitude, excuse me, for the work that the Muslim leaders have done in Los Angeles, not just as we would often point to in the last couple of years, but they've been a steadfast community that has fought to help lift up communities throughout Los Angeles. And so I want to ask before we present this resolution to them, and we'll ask the imam to speak, but I'd first like to ask my colleague, Councilmember Vera Gosa, to say a few words as well.
I thank Councilmember Ludlow and for helping to, for sponsoring this resolution, for allowing me to be here today. A few years ago, we, together, when I was Speaker of the Assembly and Mr. Ludlow was my Southern California director, put together a service at the end of Ramadan to celebrate the 30 days. And so I think it's important for us at these times to acknowledge the many Angelinos of the Muslim community who every day work in this community, give back, are engaged in the kind of services that Mr. Ludlow talked about, are peace-loving people who love this country greatly, and today we acknowledge them and their custom during the Ramadan days. Thank you.
So at this time, I would like to present this resolution and, accepting on behalf of the Muslims here in City Hall, I would like to present this resolution to Imam Abdul Karim Hassan of the Bilal Islamic Center.
I greet all of you with the Muslim greetings, which means peace be upon you. Assalamualaikum. Distinguished members of the Los Angeles City Council, Councilmember Martin Ludlow and Councilmember Vera Gosa, on behalf of all of your Muslim constituents, we thank you for acknowledging this most significant month in the life of Muslims. Ramadan is a month that we believe that the first verses of the Quran was revealed to Prophet Muhammad, prayers and peace be upon him. It is a nice month of the Muslim calendar which follow the lunar cycle. Because of the beginning of the Islamic lunar months depends upon the actual sighting of the new moon, the start and end dates for Ramadan may vary. During this month, pious Muslims abstain from food, drink, and other sensual pleasures from the break of dawn to sunset. The fast is prescribed to learn discipline and self-restraint. However, you miss the deeper significance of the fast if you don't use the time for spiritual reflection and renewal while reaching out to people of other faiths, sharing with them the good things that will bind them together as one family, the human family. This is a month of prayers, good deeds, and the sharing of one's wealth. Ramadan is a month of practical training. It trains us to see and help the less fortunate in this world, the indigent, comforting the sick, giving charity, and feeding the hungry, as well as being patient and virtuous by conforming to all moral and ethical principles. We fall short sometimes, but that's our goal, which starts in this restrictive month of Ramadan and hopefully continues throughout the year. During this month, many local Muslim communities have nightly fast-breaking dinners and other social activities that are open to the public. Most of these Islamic centers and mosques also hold special prayers which are performed after the daily nighttime prayers. This can last until 11:00 p.m. on some nights. Finally, in the last 10 days of Ramadan, on an odd numbered night, Muslims remain in the mosque or Islamic center until dawn the next day. This night has many names for its specialty, Night of Power, Spiritual Power, or Night of Destiny. In any case, it is a night spent praying and reading Quran. Again, on behalf of all of the Muslims in this great City of Los Angeles, thank you and peace be upon you all. Assalamualaikum.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Ludlow, before you finish, I also have Councilmember Garcetti would like to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Vera Gosa, for your
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Vera Rosa, for your words, and I greet many of my friends from the Islamic community here in Los Angeles. And I wish you all during this month of renewal and of cleansing and of reflection that peace may come into your lives, that peace may be in this city as well, and that that may radiate out from this month throughout this city in which we have so much suffering and so much pain still within it. I know many of you are not just spiritually active but politically active in making sure that we have a more just and meaningful city. And so in this month, know that all of the faiths of Abraham and all the faiths that are in this city are there with you as your sisters and brothers. Thank you.
Madam President, just one final comment. I wanted to also extend thank you to Najee Ali for assisting and pulling together some of today's presentation, but I also just wanted to end on this note. Dafir Dakil, who is standing here with us as well, was just reminding me of a time that we all spent together. Many of you remember the terrorist attacks of September 11th. I will never forget personally being in his Islamic center with one of the most amazing prayer sessions that I've ever participated in where people from all faiths were joined together to ask for people of goodwill to look beyond the stereotyping and the profiling that we tend to do. And it was a very difficult time in the Muslim community as Muslims were attempting to present to the world what mainstream media was not. And I just want to say on a personal note that all of us are indebted to this team that is standing before us because they really have been at the forefront of the effort to ensure that the true spirit of Islam is told correctly throughout Los Angeles and the country. So again, on a personal note, we appreciate you all being here today, and I can't quite handle fasting for thirty days, but enjoy Ramadan.
Thank you, Councilmember Ludlow, Councilmember Vera Rosa, and your recipients today. Our next presentation is going to be by, yes, Mr. Parks.
Elam, I just want to say, I just want to say to Dafir and also Elam that we really appreciate you coming down, and we really believe that this is what the city council should do, is honor every culture, every religion, so that we have the ability to show very graphically to the community that, you know, in addition to those hundred and forty languages that are spoken in the city, that we all can certainly apply our faith, that we can be a part of this community, and that this is what I think the message the city council sends when we bring each and every group here to honor them and celebrate their holidays just as we celebrate our own in this country. So I just want to say thank you. Longtime relationship with both of you, and I'm so pleased to see the school is working out and having grown up at Thirty-third and Central. I get a chance to go by there periodically and keep an eye on you, and so keep that going. And Dafir's done a wonderful job at the temple of the facility over on exposition. And I just want to say one thing, when you go to their facilities, the one thing you know, don't wear socks with holes in them because they'll make you take your shoes off. And so that's the one lesson that you'll learn, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just wanted to not make light of the councilman, but we wanted to know if you could explain the culture that's around your neck right there.
No, 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 no.
And we know it's a different culture.
It's a different culture than the chair would like to recognize.
Would you like that neck?
Yes. Mr. Parks, you're next for your presentation, as long as you take off those USC colors.
We're here today to, what we think is to right a wrong, and Wendy, I want you to look straight at me now. These are USC colors. We only wear this on National Championship Day, and so Ed Reyes. I'm sorry, Jack Weiss.
For those of you that are watching, Ed and I are Bruins.
I'm sorry to Jack Weiss isn't here today, but we just wanted to bring to the attention of the public that we had National Championship USC sports here last year with five national championships. But we went back in the records, and as I mentioned to Alex Padilla, probably because of some mathematician came up with the schedule, just as we did with the BCS last year, basically cheated the 1939 USC football team out of a championship. So we're here today to acknowledge since 1939 that the NC2A has decided to acknowledge that. It now gives USC their tenth championship, and Sharon So is over there beaming, who goes to every USC game no matter where it's played. But we wanted to honor those here. Tomorrow at the USC game, eleven living members of the 1932 National Championship Team will be honored at halftime of the Arizona team as USC goes for their second national championship. It took a number of these people that are in their eighties all these years to lobby and get this decision overturned. What happened is that at that time, the Nukrakni Award was given to the best team in the nation, which they won. They had eight victories, no defeats, and two ties. And so that acknowledgement now is something that we want to make historical in the record for the city council. We have here today two members that actually played on the team, Ambrose Schindler, the quarterback, Harry Smith, the left guard. We also have family members representing, some of the family members that were on the team, Virginia Gaspar, who represents her late husband Phil, Troy Winslow, who played for USC, second generation, handed the ball off to Mike Garrett when he became a Heisman Trophy winner, represents his father, Robert, Brett Craig represents her father, Granville Lancel, and also Linda Pond on behalf of her late father, John Stonebreaker. And we also have Carol Doherty, the Senior Associate Athletic Director. But I wanted to give you just a little brief history of what these people, what these men accomplished in 1939. The quarterback served as, made All-Conference, led the team in rushing, scoring, and total offense in 1937. He was selected as the Most Valuable Player in 1940 in the Rose Bowl, was named to the All-Star Team in 1940, had three 100-yard rushing performances during that season, was drafted by the Packers, was inducted to the USC Hall of Fame in 1997, and that's Ambrose Next, we have All-American Harry Smith, who served as the team's left guard. He made All-American in 38-39, made All-Conference in 1939, drafted by the NFL with the Lions, served as a Trojan assistant coach in '49 and '50, was inducted in the National Foundation College Football Hall of Fame in '55, and was inducted in the USC Athletic Hall of Fame in '99. Next, we have Virginia Gaspar, who is representing her late husband, Phil, who served as the USC right tackle, made All-Conference in 1939, was a three-year letterman, and also drafted by the Packers. Congratulations. Next, we have Troy Winslow, who's here accepting in behalf of his father, Robert. Robert was the right tackle on that team, was drafted by the Lions in the NFL. And also, again, Troy's a second-generation USC football player. And I also say, not only second-generation football player, but a student at USC. Just wanted to clarify that, Wendy, with students. Next, we have Granny Lansdale, serves as a USC quarterback, made All-American selection, All-Conference selection in '39, was a leading passer on the team in '37, '38, and '39. He left his career as a 23rd career rusher in the 20th in total offense. He had six 100-yard rushing games. He was drafted in the NFL by the New York Giants, inducted into the USC Athletic Hall of Fame in 2003. And we asked his daughter Brett Craig to come up. And then we have Linda Pond, in recognition of her late father, John Stonebreaker. He served as a right end on USC and was a three-year letterman. But we have a resolution in honor of all of these achievements. Again, we want to commend them for great success in 1939. We would also say to them that we're sorry it took so long for all these achievements to be brought forth, but they will get their appropriate recognition at the USC game tomorrow at halftime. I'd like to ask Mrs. Doherty to come up at this time in behalf of the school administration.
I would like to thank on behalf of the Athletic Department and the University of Southern California, Councilmember Bernard Parks and his staff for this wonderful recognition. Thank you all for being here to enjoy it with us. We do apologize that it took sixty-five years to honor these wonderful players and the family members who represent some of those players who are no longer with us. They will be at the game tomorrow, they will receive their National Championship rings and have a wonderful ceremony. Thank you again for inviting us.
Thank you very much.
We have the two members of the team. We're going to have Harry Smith speak first and then Ambrose speak next.
Thank you. It's a great honor. University of Southern California, a great school, and our great coach, Howard Jones, took five teams to the Rose Bowl in the thirties and won all of them. Thank you.
On behalf of the 1939 football team, I'd like to thank you, the council, for these proclamations, and I'd like to reiterate a little bit that's been said before, but the integrity of USC was redeemed with many of us when they reinstated our championship. And the one individual that, being the Athletic Director of the university, took this on himself to accept all the positive things about our team and reinstate our championship. And I want to thank Mike Garrett at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Troy Winslow to come up and make comments in behalf of his dad.
Well, I just want to thank the city council and the university for recognizing this team. It was quite a team. People don't realize that they had a zero-zero tie with UCLA at the end of that season, and on that team was Kenny Washington and Jackie Robinson. So they tied a pretty good team, and it's great for them to get the recognition. Thank you.
Now, we've taken all of our pictures, so they're going to give you guys, you know, you're going to kick you out. You can have a seat right here because we're going to do one more presentation. Madam Chair, my next presentation, I'd like to ask Mrs. Perry to come up, and also members of the South Los Angeles Enterprise Community Oversight Committee come up, Mr. James Smith, Tim Watkins, Cliff Graves, and also our City Department, CDD Gloria Stevenson-Clark. We're here today to honor this organization. Many of you remember that this organization was developed right after the uprising, a riot, or whatever term we use today, but it's celebrating its tenth and final year of existence. Basically, they will have an event scheduled for this weekend. They're bringing family, friends, and stakeholders together in the theme of a community celebration because of all the work they've done, and that's going to be at 9:00 AM to 3:00 at the Watts Civic Center parking lot at 10221 Compton Avenue at 103rd. They have been primarily leading social service agency, nonprofit organizations, and private businesses will be there to participate in this day-long service with forums, workshops, gang intervention programs. They'll also have screenings for diabetes, blood pressure, also AIDS testing in that area. And Councilperson Perry, myself, and Janice Han will be there, and also Supervisor Malina and Yvonne Burke will also be there along with Pastor White. But this is an organization that received a $3 million grant to assist the poor and underserved communities. The grant called for community-based oversight to manage that fund, created the Enterprise Community Oversight Committee, in which they developed eight key focused areas, dealing with health services, youth services, the variety of community initiatives. They also, the UMA Free Clinic was developed under this organization to provide those services. They created dozens of outlets for youth development and for a district of, in the Eighth District, and certainly I can attest to this, that we've lost 39% of the jobs in this community over the last decade. This is something that we felt was a major plus in stemming that tide and help job creation. Let me ask Jan Perry to come up at this time and make some comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. And I can tell you firsthand the tremendous work that the ECOC has done with the UMA Free Clinic. This is a medical clinic that was founded on a partnership with Muslim medical students from UCLA and King Drew, and it has become a first-line healthcare provider within South Los Angeles, right on the border between the Eighth and the Ninth Council District. And I'm also pleased to recognize one of the members who's on the committee, Mark Williams, who's a longtime community activist from the Ninth Council District. But suffice it to say that this weekend's event will provide not only tremendous healthcare information, but information on organizing and grant writing and gang prevention and all the things that we labor so hard every day. So I just want to say thank you to them and happy anniversary as well because this committee has exhibited a tremendous commitment to bringing not only jobs but other resources to help people become more self-empowered and self-directed to South Los Angeles. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. And our general manager, Clifford Graves, is also here from the Community Development Department. Thank you.
Madam President and members of the council, Councilman Parks and Councilman Perry, my name is James Smith, and I'm the chair of the ECOC, and I just want to join with my commissioner, Mr. Mark Williams, and Clifford Graves, and the other members of the commission. We just want to say that it's been ten years that this $2 million, $2.9 million, close to $3 million, came down into the city. At that time, the flames were smoking and just beginning to die out after the '92 uprising. And those funds hit this community for youth development and economic development. And in that context, a number of community-based agencies came together and put out proposals to try to make a difference at a time where time was needed as we begin to move towards rebuilding the future of South Central, where those funds have done a great deal of good. One of the recipients of those funds in terms of youth development has been the Watts Labor Community Action Committee, and I'd just like to have Mr. Tim Watkins say something because the first grant out of that $3 million hit the community at a time where youth development was really needed. So I'd like to ask Mr. Watkins to also give comments.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I would just like to say that WLCAC, having been founded in 1960, the end of 1965, early '66, saw at one point 4,500 youth on its payroll during summer months and after school hours, and that over the years, between 1966 and 1991, we saw those numbers go down to the point where in 1991, we had zero youth on our payroll. And so we weren't shocked in 1992 when all hell broke loose. After 1992, rather than go back to business as usual, having sustained a four-and-a-half million-dollar loss, the single largest loss in that rebellion, WLCAC committed to returning its site to youth-based purposes, youth focus. And we were totally grateful when we got the grant from ECOC to start a youth enterprise program in 1996, and it has been the basis upon which we've established a permanent commitment to youth-based programming at that site. And so the $100,000 took us all the way into the future with a commitment, with a philosophy, with an attitude that sees that no matter what the funding trends are, no matter what the funding priorities are at government level, that forevermore at WLCAC, we will have a center focused on youth. Thank you.
Thank you. And just... And just Councilmember Parks and Councilmember Perry, just, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Graves, we want to say a few words. Apologize.
Yes, very quickly, we've been very pleased to have been a partner with the ECOC over these last 10 years. And tomorrow's event is not only an important one for the community, it's also a real celebration of 10 years of accomplishment. I hope all of you will be able to come out.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. And it's a facility that I've actually was able to go to when I worked at the Department of Housing and Urban Development, where the funds came. And it's an extraordinarily successful project and a wonderful facility. So congratulations. Thank you very much. Our next presentation is Mr. Eric Garcetti.
If I can invite up here the City Attorney's Environmental Justice Initiative team. And we're going to follow that. Sharam Kargani, if I can invite him up as well. Colleagues, I think it was two years ago now, this body was honored. Each one of you won an award from the Regional Water Quality Control Board of Southern California, which is the state regulatory body that governs critical aspects of the City of Los Angeles' sanitation operations to make sure that we have clean water operations. Their strength as a board is informing partnerships with the regulated community to try to achieve cleaner water, not to come in with regulation if we can find partnership first. This year, two awards are going to folks here in the city family. And I think, again, we should be very proud of what we have shown ourselves to do. These regulations have come down fast in many ways. They've come down very hard in many ways, but Los Angeles quite literally has turned the tide and has shown leadership, whether it's putting Proposition O on the ballot this November, or whether it is looking at making sure that we have some of the cutting edge. I just said it's on the ballot. I didn't say how to vote, but it's on the ballot. That's Proposition O, as in oceans. But we have also looked at making sure that we have the best approach to clean water that we possibly can. And one of the most important ways of doing that is by making sure that we go after those who are polluters. The first award this year that the Regional Water Quality Control Board is giving to our city family is in recognition of the City Attorney's Environmental Justice Initiative, who will be awarded its first-ever environmental justice award. And we have a number of folks here, the leaders Patty Biljen, the deputy city attorney, Louis Lee, Gideon Krakov, Krakov, excuse me, Jaime Suarez, Von Manassian, and Rosa Barelli. I'll describe what they do, but please, first, let's congratulate them on winning the first ever environmental justice award. The, and a lot of people don't know that this team is out there, but they have really been cracking away at a number of important environmental initiatives, focusing on regulatory and prosecutorial resources on neighborhoods that are disproportionately impacted by unhealthy pollution. And taking this approach is probably the most effective method to force positive change in unsafe and illegal business practices. The City's Attorney's Environmental Justice Initiative, excuse me, coordinates inspectors from 14 agencies, 14 different agencies into a rollout team. And 10 times per month, they roll out to inspect polluters, and then we're warranted prosecute polluters aggressively. Let me give you two examples of their work. First is the Wilmington Initiative. This was started in June of last year in the effort focused on proactive inspections by the city, the county, and state regulatory agencies, and has resulted in 18 different criminal cases against harbor-area businesses that have operations contaminating the air, the ground, and the water where people live or work. Again, I can't underscore how important this is for the city's health and for the residents that live in Wilmington. The result is that these businesses have cleaned up their operations, and healthcare hazards are reduced for the residents. A second example is the Chrome Platers Initiative, and I know this has been an important initiative and an area of focus of our chair of our environmental quality committee, Ms. Jan Perry. In October 2003, the Chrome Platers Initiative focused on proactive inspections, again, by the city, the county, and the state regulatory agencies on a sample of approximately 207 permitted chrome plating facilities in Southern California. 10 criminal charges were filed in February against Palace Plating, a chrome plating facility located across the street from 28th Street Elementary School in South Los Angeles, which Ms. Perry has really led the fight on. This is a school where the children are suffering from asthma, respiratory disease, and the parents face heartbreaking choices in raising their families in unhealthy conditions. These are two examples of the team, the City Attorney's Environmental Justice Initiative, and the testimony that they have given. I want to give these awards to them before we turn to our second award and give Ms. Perry the opportunity to, if she'd like, to mention something as well about some of the initiatives. But first, let me give this first one to Gideon Krakov, who, colleagues, I know many of you know, he is also recently married, so this is kind of a triple congratulations. Congratulations on this award, congratulations on becoming an honest man, and also congratulations to you on your leaving the city as well. This will be your last week here. You've done a tremendous job. I know you've had a great experience at the city attorney's office, and you'll be going back into the private sector to hang out your own shingle there. But we wish you congratulations first on the award, but also on those other things too. Gideon Krakov. Von Manassian. Give him a round of applause, too. Louis Lee. Couldn't be with us today. Patty Biljen. And I'd like to invite, Gideon, you want to say, Patty? Patty.
Thank you. Good morning, honorable members of the city council, Madam Chair, Council President Padilla. Environmental justice is a very important issue affecting the City of Los Angeles. We all hear about it a lot in theory, but the day-to-day reality is very real for many, many citizens in this great city we all live in. As Councilmember Garcetti just said, we've been out as a strike force. We've committed our resources to neighborhoods such as Sun Valley, Wilmington, South LA, Pacoima, and Wilmington suffering disproportionate exposure to industry. It is unacceptable that we find a chrome plater doing business four feet away from a daycare center, or right across the street from the fifth-largest elementary school in the western states. This is unacceptable. We see asthma on the rise. We see respiratory on the rise. This is why this strike force is committed to environmental enforcement and water quality. Our most recent initiative is the Chromium 6 Initiative, where we filed a case against a facility that poses threat to our groundwater, our most precious resource. I've had the great privilege to work with Councilmember Perry, Council President Padilla, Councilmember Grul, and their staff on these very important issues affecting the lives of all our futures. Thank you again for this prestigious award.
Congratulations, Patty. And like in his last speech before the council, as a city employee, Gideon Krakov.
Thank you, Eric, for recognition of the program. Just very briefly, the city attorney gave us the opportunity to fly on this. He said we wanted to find new creative ways within our office to address this issue of environmental justice. We have great partners, city partners, sanitation, building and safety, fire department, and together we know, working together, we can be better. The cooperation makes us more effective, and that's the lesson of the program. Eric, thank you for the kind words. It's been very rewarding and valuable, being married, but also to work for the city. There are tremendous highs of public service. One of them was working with many folks on the council, and Sharam Kargani, to settle litigation, put to bed the litigation over trash in the LA River and the city sanitation permit, stormwater permit. There's a lot of important and exciting challenges. I'm an environmental attorney. This council, this city, is going to have so many interesting issues, hard work, big infrastructure projects, vision, but at the end, it's going to be worthwhile, whether it's renewable power at DWP, what to do about our trash, new technologies to try to find ways to reuse and recycle and convert that in ways that are more friendly to the environment, whether it's environmental justice. Councilman Cardenas has a motion to create a zone in Sun Valley. The Environmental Justice Improvement District, Jan Perry, has a motion to reopen M1 zoning. These are the kind of issues that together we can all work on. I hope to work with you in private practice, to the extent allowable by law, to face these tough challenges. It's been a great opportunity to serve, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Vierigosa.
Yes, I don't get up very often to talk about young people who've only been with the city for a couple of years, but Gideon is a special young man. And hearing him speak with the passion that he does, using his law skills for the public good and for environmental justice, I see a budding elected official one day, someone who's passionate, someone who cares about public policy, someone who's always bridging communities, and someone who cares very passionately about this city. Good luck and congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't quite sure, did we explain the New York Times photograph today? No, we didn't. When you're acknowledging a gentleman for his work on environmental issues, I just got a copy of the New York Times. My mother sent me the photograph. It was of Gideon and his wife getting married in the terminal, because they used MTA mass transportation to get to their wedding. And it made the New York Times as a photograph. So no better person to recognize for environmental stewardship. And of course, to all of you, congratulations and thank you, councilmen, for continuing to look out for the folks who are looking out for the greater good.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, the next award that, and if you guys will just hang out for one second, the Regional Water Quality Control Board recognized another one of the city family here, somebody well-known to all of us around this horseshoe, Sharam Kargani as well, who's going to be receiving the Water Quality Leadership Award. Please give him a round of applause for that, too. And the great general manager of Bureau of Sanitation, Rita Robinson, is here as well. We also have Board of Public Works Commissioner as well, Cynthia Ruiz. Sharam is the Director of the Watershed Protection Division of the Bureau of Sanitation. And as he will tell you, to quote, "Water that falls from the sky, that's ours." This important division has the task of addressing the huge quantities of pollution that fall into the gutter, are carried into the storm drains, and out into the LA River through our communities, Bayona Creek, to Hunger Watershed, and that eventually go to dirty the ocean and the beach with bacteria, with pollution, with trash, with heavy metals, with pathogens, you name it. It's in our water, which should be something that cleanses us, not that pollutes. So he is given the job with so many of us as stewards to manage this water in a way that meets the stringent requirements of the city's stormwater permit. Let me give you some examples of Sharam's work. Because of his leadership, his team as well, and like anybody who wins an award, I know it's part of a team, all of us here, and their ability to work with the neighborhood councils through the Integrated Resources Plan, which I really believe has become a national model. The City of Los Angeles was granted an important regulatory extension from the Water Resources Control Board, to synchronize the IRP schedule and its regulatory mandate. This year alone, the Watershed Protection Division completed 20 flood and pollution abatement projects. They installed hundreds of catch basin screens, which you can see as you drive through the streets of Los Angeles on the storm drains, and each of the requirements for the City of Los Angeles under our stormwater permit. This year alone, the Watershed Protection Division went into 110 schools and talked about stormwater pollution with 25,000 students. And their website, www.stormwater.org, got 200,000 hits. Who would think that stormwater is sexy, but it is. This kind of education is the most cost-effective method of reducing garbage in our streets that becomes pollution on our beaches and our rivers and in our urban lakes as well. So congratulations, Sharam. It's also a good place to go to find out information, and I don't believe there's any arguments against, which I would let people know about too, but information about Proposition O. But congratulations, Sharam, on being honored by the Water Quality Control Board. Again, colleagues, this was an award that we all received, and it's really wonderful to see this continuing in the city family, to get recognition by that most strictest of regulatory bodies, the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So please join me again in congratulating Sharam, and we'll hear from him now, too.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Garcetti, for this honor. Good morning, Madam Chair, President Padilla, members of city council. Thank you so much for recognizing the Bureau of Sanitation's stormwater program in improving the water quality of the City of Los Angeles water bodies. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to work with the city council that is committed to a cleaner and healthier city water bodies. Thank you again. I want to acknowledge my general manager, Ms. Rita Robinson, for her, for her stunt support of the program, Commissioner Ruiz, and Mr. Deaton, that always, you know, is thinking about the program and its funding. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Sharam.
And I believe Ms. Robinson wants to say a couple of words, too.
Good morning. It's such a pleasure and an honor to be here to congratulate Sharam and also our partners in this, the city attorney's office, for all their hard work, and also to be part of a city that is so very committed to environmental issues in this region and in this country. I know that many of you are aware, the Bureau of Sanitation is on the leading edge on every level of environmental issues regarding our water, our air, and also regarding our solid waste. So we are very much in tune with what we know is important to do for the health and safety of the constituents of the City of Los Angeles. And as I always say, I inherited the best team in the world, and I am so proud to be here this morning as representative of the mayor, the council, the Board of Public Works, and the Bureau of Sanitation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Congratulations to all of you. Mr. Clerk, let us take the time to call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Weiss, Sain, Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum.
All right, let us run through the agenda.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Vierigosa moves. Mr. Padilla seconds. Those are approved.
Commendatory resolution, approval.
Mr. Labange moves, and Ms. Grul seconds. Those are also approved.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items 1 through 6 are before us, members. Public hearings have already been held. It would require a motion from the floor to reopen. Mr. Labange asked for 1 to be called special. Items 2 through 6 are remaining before us. Seeing no other items called special, open the roll on that. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 11 ayes. Those are approved.
Items 7 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
All right, those are now before us. There are no public comment cards. Ms. Grul?
I'd like to call item number 20 special, please.
Item 20 is called special by Ms. Grul. Any other items 7 through 25? Seeing none, those matters are now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 11 ayes. That is, those are approved as well.
And the ordinance on item 7 will go over one week to next Friday.
All right.
That concludes the items on the regular meeting. Do you wish to take up the special meeting at this time?
Yes, let's recess the regular meeting and go into the special.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grul, Hahn, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Vierigosa, Weiss, Sain, Padilla, 11 members present and a quorum.
All right, we are at the special meeting. We have, we're in session. Which items are before us?
They have two items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, I don't believe there are any cards.
Madam President?
Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Ludlow.
Reconsider number, item 2? Do I need to do a reconsideration? Call special for Hahn.
When we get back into that meeting, we're now in the special session, item 1 and 2. Did she, Mr. Ludlow, do you want to know if she was 2 on the special agenda or 2 on the regular agenda? Because 2, aha, okay, then we will call 2 special on the regular meeting, on the special meeting. That leaves item 1 before us on the special agenda. Anyone want to call 1 special? If not, those matters, that matters before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. 11 ayes. That is approved. We will hold item 2 on the special agenda until Ms. Hahn comes in.
I think Mr. Garcetti is going to do it for her, is what I'm hearing.
Okay. Rather than, I think at this point, we have, before we go into any of the special items, we will now go back to special presentations, and let me recognize Councilmember Grul.
Thank you. Good morning. And I want to thank the recipients today, their patience this morning. Sorry, I messed that up. Sorry, I messed that up. I have two presentations, and my first presentation I'd like to do is regarding a health and safety fair, if I could have all the representatives that are here today for that presentation. Colleagues, tomorrow, I'm having the first Wendy Gruel Health and Safety Fair at North Hollywood Valley Plaza Park. Providing children with a healthy, safe, and nurturing environment is a must if we expect them to contribute to our communities as adults. At the safety fair, families will receive free healthcare services and safety tips for their children. They'll also provide free medical, dental, hearing, and vision screenings, as well as free immunizations for children in preschool age to 12 years old. Information on nutrition, fitness, and sports will also be available. The safety component aspect of this program will provide information on fingerprinting, child abduction prevention, swimming pool safety, and anti-gang materials. In addition, children of all ages and adults will enjoy the music and dance entertainment performed by Hazi Hip-Hop, La Salsa Kids, Henry Mancini Foundation Players, La Morena, and Fair Avenue Folklorico Dance Group. And if that is not enough, if we haven't gotten you excited about it, there will be free hot dogs and tacos for everyone, and 1,000 free popsicles to keep everyone cool in the San Fernando Valley. I'm doing this tomorrow with the help of those individuals behind me because it's important for children and parents to have the right tools to ensure their child's safety. And I know that we sometimes take for granted that we all know all the information. As you know, our CHP Officer Tang can tell you, my own experience of thinking that my car seat was installed properly, found out it was not, and he helped me make sure it was. So no matter who you are, you need to make sure you are educated about the safety tips. But none of this tomorrow would be possible without the support and dedication of the many cosponsors and healthcare providers. Those standing with me today are the ones that stood by me and helped me plan and execute what will be a great fair for the families of the San Fernando Valley. Kaiser Permanente, Valley Community Clinic, the California Highway Patrol, the Los Angeles Police Department, and the Los Angeles Department of Recreation Parks. So today, I want to recognize all of you for your vision and commitment to providing the needed education for our families so that our children, our future, can be healthy and strong. So I'd like to, at this point in time, present these proclamations and ask those to say a few words. Two individuals from the California Highway Patrol, one you all see very often is Leland Tang, and also Lieutenant Adam James from the California Highway Patrol. Let's give them a great round of applause. Yeah. Yeah, we'll do back there. I'd also like to present a proclamation to someone who is very familiar to those of you in City Hall, Stacy Spiegel from Keys Motors, who's been a great supporter of our car seat giveaway program, and to thank you, Stacy, and Keys Automotive. Thank you. Our next presentation is to State Farm Insurance, Ana Alcarez, am I going to say it right there? Sorry about that. Alcarez, from State Farm Insurance, who has come forward with the financial support for this program tomorrow. Let's give a great round of applause for State Farm. Next presentation is for Norman Kellums from our wonderful Police Department and Valley Traffic Division. He had to leave, but we want to thank the Los Angeles Police Department. The next is Laura Island from Valley Plaza Park, who've been great to work with us and making tomorrow quite a success and taking over their park, I think. And last but not least, a wonderful partner here in the City of Los Angeles, and similarly, no one is shy about their support, is Rita Speck from Kaiser Permanente. Rita. Now, I thought we also had one, and I may have left it somewhere, to recognize Valley Community Clinic, who could not be here today. So would any of you like to say a few words? Don't be shy. Come on in. Say something.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel, for this presentation, but it's so important what you're doing. As you were talking about with your own experience, over 84% of children that are in vehicle seats are not using them correctly. So that's one of the priorities that State Farm has taken to making sure that our children are safe in vehicles and partnering with you, with the California Highway Patrol and the other partners, to create this education forum for children and for families is awesome. So thank you. Thank you for letting us be a part of it.
Thank you very much. Want to say something, Lieutenant? Ladies first. I'll be quick.
I just want to thank you. Keys Motors is happy to support this program, but we're really thankful for your leadership for establishing this program.
Thanks, Stacy.
Honored to be here today on behalf of the California Highway Patrol. Thank you very much for the proclamation here today. I can assure you, there's nothing more important to us in our department than the health, safety, and welfare of our children out there. So we'll do whatever we can to continue those efforts. Thank you for the City of Los Angeles and the public and private agencies around us here to help us continue that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. On behalf of Kaiser Permanente, we appreciate your recognition, and we're proud to be a partner with you and other members of the City Council across the city in promoting health and safety and the welfare of our community. Thank you. Thank you. So colleagues, if we could give another round of applause, and particularly those of you that are watching, October 16 tomorrow, 11 to 3, Valley Plaza Park, our health fair. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Our final presentation will be done.
Sorry, I have just one more. I apologize.
Mr. Labanj.
I wanted to thank all of you, the Highway Patrol and Kaiser, especially for all the good we're. And Stacy, I want to thank you for your great work that you've done all through, and everyone who's been involved. It's wonderful to have these events and fairs to educate the public on how to safely, with children and everybody in vehicles and movement. So it's a good team of people you've got. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Tom. Thank you all. If I could have the big group of people back here on L.A.'s Best, everyone, if you could come up, don't be shy, the whole group. Colleagues, you may have heard this morning some music, some children singing, entertainment, and quite a celebration in the rotunda. As they're all walking up, many of you know that L.A.'s Best is a nationally recognized after-school program that is started here in the City of Los Angeles. Today is their Sweet 16th birthday for 16 years of providing after-school a safe environment for kids. And we heard this morning from a parent, as well as two young people who were part of the first group of L.A.'s Best students, and they talked about, in essence, really saving kids' lives. Saving kids' lives by providing them a wonderful opportunity to learn and to play and to be on a safe program. I want to recognize particularly Carla Sanger, who is with me today, where we were part of the 53-member Education Council that was established by Mayor Tom Bradley in September of 1988. And despite all the warnings that we heard that teachers would never give up their classrooms or that after-school program would never be able to allow to use, utilize school district property, and that it would never grow beyond that 10 schools without losing its high quality, how we'd never be able to sustain the pilot with sufficient funding, the list goes on. But here are we, so here we are, 16 years later with a model program that has grown to serve hundreds of thousands of children throughout the City of Los Angeles. And if you haven't gone over the bridge this morning, you have to go by. You've seen those signs about how many people have been served at McDonald's. Well, you'll see, it will change every single day about how many, I think it's how many hours, right, Carla?
Yeah, it's not quite up yet.
It's not quite up yet. It will be. She was so excited and told me the other day, so I didn't get to see that this morning. Technical difficulties. But in the 16 years this program has grown from 10 sites, now, and announced by Mayor Han this morning, to almost 130 sites, serving over 21,000 students per day at no cost to the parents. The last UTLA demonstration at L.A.'s Best School carries signs that read, "We love L.A.'s Best. What about the rest?" And I know that you, as long as, as well as the people standing behind me, know that we should increase this program and ensure that every child has an opportunity to participate. More than 100 community-based organizations provide the content and staff to support L.A.'s Best. Annually, L.A.'s Best can count on more than 1,000 volunteers to help. But L.A.'s Best is not about just a government success alone. The Education Council has recognized the key to success was about a public-private partnership with a capacity to be sustained and grow with both government and private dollars, and that it must be evaluated continuously to improve and to demonstrate results. So today, we celebrate 16 years of dedication to our children, 16 years of providing our most vulnerable children with a safe place to go, adults to look up to, and engaging activities at school every single day. I want to thank Carla Sanger, who has led this effort as President and CEO of L.A.'s Best, Jerry Cutell, Chair of L.A.'s Best Governing Board, Ray Ely, the Chair of the L.A.'s Best Advisory Board, and Debbie Lockston, who's the L.A.'s Best Chief Operating Officer. So I'd like to present to all of you a proclamation that recognizes and congratulates L.A.'s Best for its Sweet 16th birthday and for your committed and dedicated efforts to help provide a safe environment for our children. Let's give them a great round of applause.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel, Mr. Garcetti would like to also say something.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank Wendy Gruel, who I know is a former board member of L.A.'s Best as well, and congratulate Carla, the board, all the volunteers, the students and the staff for 16 amazing years of great work. And I want to take up something that Wendy said, which is, you know, when you're talking about saving lives, we brought a school in here, Lesion Heights Elementary School, that where L.A.'s Best went into recently, and we honored them because they had the largest rise in the state in their reading scores. And it's literally right around the corner from where I live, in Echo Park. And when people, when I tell people about how well that school is doing, they say, "How did that happen?" And I said, "A big part of it is that L.A.'s Best came into that school." And two years running, it's been the best in the state. The highest level one year, tied, and then one year actually the best in the state for the improvement in their scores. And I know that's because of you. I play basketball with some of the kids, just kind of, you know, when they're hanging out after school, and talk to them about their experience, too, and it just brings a smile to their faces when they talk about L.A.'s Best. So congratulations. Keep saving lives. And as we look at the possible passing, and there's arguments on both sides, and I'm sure there's good places to find them, call any of our offices, and we will give you the arguments on both sides. But if Measure A passes, which has a component having to do with crime prevention, we need to look at L.A.'s Best here as one of those crime prevention programs, those after-school programs, and as a source potentially of expanding that so that every single elementary school in the City of L.A. finally does indeed have an L.A.'s Best program. Congratulations.
Mr. Labanj.
Thank you, Madam President. And Councilmember Gruel, thank you. Ms. Sanger, thank you. You're an angel in this City of Angels. And what's so special, too, from a political standpoint, if you transcend time with the great Tom Bradley and his vision, with the great work of Richard Worden, and with the great work of Jim Han, this is a fixture in our community now. So who knows no politics, who only knows good, and the good that goes on the schoolyards and the classrooms and in places throughout Los Angeles. I only wish it could be everywhere, because truly, it does make a very big difference when a young person is loved after school and engaged to create something. And I would just love to, you know, I'm a sociology major, but I would love to see some of those students who benefited in the early years to see where they are now. They're probably standing in the middle of that pack, part of the greatest, part of the team that you've created in L.A.'s Best. It really is a wonderful thing. And Carla Sanger, you're very special, and all your staffs, and the alumni of the staff, and everybody's made an impact, and I'm just so very proud of this program. And more has to be done, because I had it. I was in a playground program after school in L.A.'s Best. I wasn't in an art program, I was on the fields, but still, it was a place to be, and it wasn't the street, and it wasn't the alley, and it wasn't behind a building. It was out with others, enjoying, engaging, and having a great experience as a young person. That's so wonderful. So congratulations to Sweet 16, L.A.'s Best. Thank you all very, very much.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to just rise and congratulate all of you for your great work. Couple of years ago, I had the opportunity to attend an event to celebrate L.A.'s Best at Gratz Elementary. On that day, we had an individual by the name of Arnold Schwarzenegger on the field with us, now Governor. My pitch to you is, let's remind him he was here. Let's remind him that this program does wonders for our city, for our state, and in a time of budget cuts, make him aware of his contribution, but more so how you were able to leverage what we have here in the city in terms of movie star power, monetary power, but now we have political power. So let's convince him, and let's work together on that. Thank you so much. Congratulations for your great work.
Thank you, Councilmembers. And Councilmember Reyes, I will tell you that Tuesday night, I was with Arnold. I worked with him very closely on Prop 49. He's a huge supporter of after-school programs and has been for years and years. About 50% of our money comes from the state, and I think with our connection with Arnold, he patterned his Arnold All-Stars After-School Program in the middle schools after L.A.'s Best. So I can reasonably assure you that we will get every consideration from dollars in the state budget to continue the growth of L.A.'s Best and carry that message from Arnold, as well as ex-Mayor Riordan, who was the Secretary of Education, who was here with us this morning, who also keeps on the ear of Arnold relative to our needs for our program. Because as Councilmember Gruel, a former member of our board, a wonderful member of our board, we miss her, but she went on to hire things as a council member, has mentioned, we've grown from 21 schools with 3,000 kids to now about to go to 130 schools with 23,000 kids every day. But under our criteria, we're 75, to be an L.A.'s Best school, at least 75% of the children have to be eligible for federal lunch money. There are 287 elementary schools that meet that criteria. So we have a long way to go, and we hope to get there someday with all of your support. And we thank the members of the City Council for all their support over the years and for all your help that you've given to L.A.'s Best. Thank you.
As everyone knows, any successful team derives a lot of energy from all the members of the team and the leadership. I'd first like to acknowledge the support we received from Councilman Padilla and Councilman Ludlow on our staff development program. And we have a tremendous leader in Carla Sanger, right behind me here, who's put together a terrific team, and along with the support from the mayor's office and the council members and the public and private partnership, we have a tremendous program, and we hope to be back here in another 16 years to celebrate.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to all of my colleagues. L.A.'s Best touches each of our districts and is something that is really an incredible opportunity for us to work towards the future of our children. And thank you to everyone standing behind us, because they really have made it possible. Thank you very much.
All right. I believe Mr. Ludlow also wanted to just say a few words.
I rise for a couple of reasons. First, I wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Gruel's work, and we were just standing out in the rotunda with former Mayor Richard Riordan, and he gave her quite, quite a great compliment to add to his comments on her leadership, but also to Carla and the entire team. I want to thank you for two things. One, I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to really reach out and meet hundreds of academics and scholars and young enthusiasts who are part of the L.A. Best team. And I saw on that staff-building day just such energy and passion to keep a group like that focused for a long period of time on a Saturday when USC was playing, and I know UCLA was playing as well, that it was just a great, great day, and I want to thank you for that. And then finally, I've had an opportunity to be out in the schools, in the L.A. Best schools, and particularly Shenandoah and some of the others in my district. You all have done such amazing work. You're giving kids hopes, you're fulfilling, allowing them to fulfill their dreams, to the entire team. Thank you. And the greatest moment today was here in that beautiful 68th Street School choir perform. It was phenomenal. So we love you all. We thank you so much, each and every one of you, for keeping your commitment to kids and our commitment to kids at the forefront of the city's agenda. So thank you all. Wendy, once again, thank you.
Martin, thank you all, and congratulations to L.A. Best. Mr. Reyes.
Last but not least, we're almost there. Last but not least, we're almost there. I'd like to ask Ms. Luisa Shinico-Yos to come forward. Members of the council, during the past week, we've had many activities regarding Columbus, discovering the Americas. But I believe that it's equally important to honor the indigenous peoples who are here with advanced civilizations before that time and still maintain their culture, language, and identity until today. Many of you may know that there's a significant group of indigenous Maya living here in Los Angeles, especially concentrated in the districts which include Pico Union and Normandy areas. Just earlier, I was speaking to this contribution, and a very interesting fact was pointed out to me that when the Russians were looking at how to get their vehicles up their space program out to Venus, they were actually using the calculations from the Mayans back then. So the advancements of these cultures is tremendous. Today, we have an organization, the acronym is pronounced as JEEP, it's the Guatemalan Education Action Project. It's a human rights and community cultural organization founded in 1983 by Guatemalan immigrants, mostly Mayan, in the Allee area for the purpose of respecting the Guatemalan identity and promoting friendship between and among the Guatemalan communities in the U.S. with those of Guatemala and North American friends. On Tuesday, a special reception was held for Ms. Shinico-Yos and Mama Satamales here on 7th near Alvarado in my district. And today, we want to recognize Ms. Luisa Shinico-Yos for her years of untiring dedication to the betterment of Mayan, indigenous, and small farmers. Ms. Shinico is a member of the National Directorate of Conic, Coordinadora Nacional Endigina y Campesina. Inasmuch as Conic has brought to international attention the urgent need to resolve the land crisis in Guatemala as a result of taking nationwide actions, it has entered into negotiations with the government of Guatemala for peaceful resolution to recent violent plantation evictions. Today, we are here to honor her and her organization for her work for peace, justice, and economic social advancement of Mayan peoples everywhere. And again, it often comes to me, why are you doing this in council? Why these events? Why these people? And I can share with you that the folks that are represented here today, it's important to celebrate this culture, because many that are living here as indigenous folks don't realize how much labor and suffering they will go through. It's important to talk about the experience here in the United States before they leave their countries. And it's important to have advocates like Ms. Luisa Shinico-Yos. So it's with grand, great pleasure that I'd like to provide the certificate of welcome on the occasion of her first visit to El Pueblo de Nuestra Señora, La Reina de Los Ángeles, on behalf of the City Council. We extend our warmest wishes and hopes that you'll visit us again. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for being here. Would you like to share a few words? Si? Compartir unas palabras? Gracias. Yes. Okay. She was expressing her heartfelt thanks for your warmth, for your allowing her to be here, and to express her gratitude in being able to speak to the issues of the hardships and the human right violations that occur to indigenous folks as they come here to the United States. And she wants to thank us for allowing her to be here as part of this council.
I want to thank you, Madam President of the council. I want to thank Ed Reyes. I want to thank JEEP, which is the organization, and the national organization, NISWA, who helped us to be able to come here and share. And we just want to let you know that the Mayan population in Guatemala is actually nearly 80% of the population, and their languages that they speak are actually 22 different Mayan languages. And we want to thank you for this certificate, as it represents your support for the great work for human rights. And I want to ask everyone to go ahead and give a very big round of applause for all of those that have been present and received certificates, because we know that they're all working for the betterment of their own country.
Gracias.
Muchisimas gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and welcome, and thank you for your visit.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I have one more presentation. We do have with us some strong advocates for the area of Pico Union. This Sunday, October 17th, I'd like to ask them to step forward. Everybody, come on. We're going to have our 9th Annual Pico Union Harvest Festival at Alvarado Terrace Park. It will begin with a parade. It will feature 15 of our local schools. There'll be entertainment, rides, arts and crafts from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Along with the facilities, we'll be honoring the winners of an annual children's art contest that includes all these schools. Members of the council, I can see they're all at their desk, that they have placed on their desk a T-shirt regarding the Pico Union Harvest Festival. And with us, we have one of the winners of this great tradition. I'd like to ask Alejandrina Vega Lopez, she's accompanied by her mom and her teacher, Mr. Delgado. Alejandrina is a first grader at Leo Paletti Elementary School. As part of her first prize, she will receive a $500 bond that she will hopefully put towards a career in design. And if you can see her artwork, which I didn't bring with me. Lupe, can you bring me my artwork? This great talent in this great community. And I also want to recognize Judith Raphael. She has been the anchor, the stalwart, the person that works hard to make sure this event occurs. And council colleagues, I can tell you that this kind of artwork by a first grader, Alejandrina, you can hold it, Alejandrina, is a reflection of the great energy we have in these neighborhoods. Just the other day, we had a grand opening for the school, and the thousands and thousands of kids we have in this area is just overwhelming. And to have the great talent like Alejandrina with us is, I think, a great demonstration of the great resources we have in Los Angeles. I'd like to ask Ms. Judith Raphael, she'd like to speak and share a few words about this event. Ms. Raphael?
I'd like to thank Councilman Ed Reyes for his continuous support of the arts. Alejandrina won the first prize between 150 students. We had 150 artworks. 15 schools are participating in it, and our theme this year is "Through the Eyes of the Children." This is all volunteer effort. Nobody gets paid for everything they do for the city, for the district. District 4, Mr. Richard Alonso, the superintendent, has been supportive of this festival for nine years. It is a real gathering of people from many countries, and as you can see, I have an accent too. And we have on Sunday 70 students from Magnolia Elementary School singing "It's a Wonderful World" in English and in Spanish. We developed throughout the festival a group of mariachis with a very talented teacher who gives his time for free, Mr. Martin Olivera. He even taught a blind student to play the violin. I want to, please, look at your T-shirts and see how many wonderful sponsors we have. We have City National Bank, who has supported us from day one. And I want to thank the city of Los Angeles for giving us this little park. It needs a lot of care, but on Sunday, you can see a beautiful park alive with music. And I would like to praise our 70 volunteers who are there from 5:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon. We have a great salsa contest, so come and dance with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Raphael.
Alejandrina, would you like to share a few words? Put on the spot here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alejandrina.
Thank you for your artwork.
You know, the, just one last point, I want to thank our teacher, Ms. Delgado, Señora, for coming here today. I say this all the time, but it always is worth repeating, these kids are living in conditions where they have two or three families living in one bedroom. Many of these kids are playing in fire escapes and hallways. They can't get onto the street because of the pressures of the gang violence and the homelessness and the kind of environments that they are surviving in. So to see this event happen in the way it does with all the happy kids is really is a big event. So I want to thank them for their tenacity and for their smiles, and hopefully see some of you there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Reyes. Mr. Clerk, I believe we can return to the items on our agenda.
Madam President, do you wish to take public comment at this time?
Yes, let's take public comment. Now will be the public comment period. Let me call forward first the representatives who are here from the South Central Farmers at this time, to be followed by Danny Schneider.
Can we do 12 forthwith as well?
Which one?
21.
Number...
21.
21.
Thank you.
Okay, 21 will go forthwith without objection.
My name is Ediogenes Louvano. I wanted to call your attention, councilmember, about this group behind me. They're a group of farmers. That's why we come to ask for your help. Since you're the primary, the principal authority here in the county of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, we're here fighting for that land. That's why, to all of you elected officials, we're here to ask you to lend us a helping hand. Don't put us in the back. Lend us a helping hand. Now I'd like to ask you a question. Is it that you guys put us aside because we're farmers? Or what is the reason? All the farmers that you see here were all Mexican? We're here to earn a living. We came looking for a better way of life in the United States. We're farmers. We're Mexicans. We earn our work and living, doing it honestly. That's why elected officials, I've been here working for over 30 years. I don't know how to read or write, but I'm here working hard and doing and living, abiding by the laws. My name is Valentin Diaz, and I'm here to ask you, Mr. President, and the rest of the council people, to please help us find a solution to our problems. I'm directing these comments to Councilwoman Perry. She's the councilperson for our district, District 9 there in Alameda, and I want to let you know to help us. I want to let you know that we're not your enemies. That's why I ask you to please find a solution on our behalf. And lastly, I'm going to talk for those people who do not have a lot of voice, who do not voice their comments or get a lot of help. I'd like you to keep in mind all the homeless people. The cold weather is approaching, and they need your help. Not only people that are homeless, but women that are being sexually abused constantly, and children that are being sexually abused also. Please, help us find a solution, and don't forget about them. Help them. Lastly, we want land and liberty. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Alberto Clatual. I'm a student at East Los Angeles College, and in over a period of six years, I have seen the many benefits that the Garden has provided for my community. Number one, it provides an extra source of revenue for low-income families such as myself. It feeds many families with fresh fruits and vegetables on a daily basis. And it is also a safety environment for children where they could, where they're able to play and learn the... And it is also a safety environment for children where they're able to play and learn the process of cultivating fruits and vegetables. These are some of the benefits that the South Central Farmers provide for our community, and we ask you to make the right choice and help us out during these difficult times right now. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Merbo Clatoa. I'm a student at East Los Angeles College and a farmer located at 41st and Alameda. I've been farming with my family since I was 15. It's something that I have done with my family. And we're just here asking to take into consideration the community's needs, and we just want green space, not warehouses. Thank you for your time.
We have a card that was submitted by Mr. Danny Schneider. Is Mr. Danny Schneider present? If not, then thank you. This now concludes the public comment, and that public comment is closed. Let's return to the agenda items.
Item one was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange, item number one.
I have the questions answered by the department, so I'm satisfied that this is a step forward by Cultural Affairs. Thank you.
All right, then, item one is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Item 20 was called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I just wanted to highlight this today. This is a reward motion for Mr. Germik Sandu, who was the owner of Jabby's Liquor Store in my district, right across the street from North Hollywood High School. He was shot and killed by an unknown suspect in North Hollywood area of Los Angeles on September 15th. Suspect walked into the liquor store and without provocation shot Mr. Sandu. The suspect then robbed the store. We have been working with LAPD. We did have actually a composite drawing from some of the witnesses. That has not yet allowed us to find our suspect. We are asking today that we be able to have a reward in the amount of $50,000 to be able to help find this individual who has devastated this family and who has caused great, I think, sadness and sorrow to the community at large. So many people came the day we had a press conference with the composite. Neighbors who had gone to that liquor store, kids who had come after school from North Hollywood High School, who had interacted with Mr. Sandu. So I'd ask that we help by putting this reward out there and to encourage anyone who knows anything about this shooting that occurred on September 15th. And if you've seen the composite drawing or have a question, to please call the Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you very much, Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, that is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item two from the special meeting was called special by Councilmember Ludlow.
I think it was called on behalf of Ms. Hahn, and Mr. Garcetti is prepared to deal with this.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. On behalf of Ms. Hahn and for Ms. Hahn, I'd like to amend the item to make the approval retroactive and effective October 1st, and if it passes, to send it forthwith, please.
All right, we've heard the motion from Mr. Garcetti amending the item. Without objection, that amendment will be included. And the item is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved.
Special one has been introduced by Councilmember Gruel, and she will speak to the findings.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have before you today a resolution to extend the Ventura Boulevard interim control ordinance. The Ventura Boulevard ICO prohibits new auto-related uses between Colfax and Vineland Avenue, which expires on Monday, October 18th. The ICO is a critical factor in my efforts to prevent further deterioration of this important section of the Valley's main street. There was some confusion about the date of the expiration, and it did not learn the actual date until after today's agenda was published. Moreover, the resolution required to extend the ICO was not prepared in time to be calendared as part of today's agenda. I therefore move that the council determine is provided in Section 54954.2B2 of the Government Code and pursuant to Rule 23 of the Rules and the City Council, that there's a need to take immediate action on this matter, and that the need for action came to the attention of the City Council subsequent to the posting of the agenda for today's council meeting.
All right, we've heard that. Findings, are there any -- no one else wishes to speak on the findings, so open the roll on the findings. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, this matter is now before us, and I think we heard from Ms. Gruel why she's asking for the approval. So on the substance of the motion, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. We'll send it forthwith. Anything else remaining on the desk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused to leave at 1:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 27th, meets council policy.
Ms. Gruel is excused. Hopefully, we'll be out by 1:00 p.m., but if not, she's excused.
That clears the desk, Madam President.
All right, are there any announcements, members? Mr. Labange.
I think there's a great photo exhibit over at the Central Library that's going to open in Jan Perry's district. I was there last night, Jan. It's the 100th anniversary of sports photography from the Herald Examiner archives, some classic works, and it's called Play to Play in L.A. It's a great photo display. Like to encourage all to come to the Central Library and see that great exhibition, sponsored by many people. Thank you very much, Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to announce that the SOCA-GAKA International SGI African Events Organizing Committee is holding its fourth annual festival on Sunday, October 17th. The event will take place at the SGI Los Angeles Friendship Center at 5899 Venice Boulevard from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The theme is "Celebrating Families of the World." The goal of the AEOC is to deepen knowledge and awareness of African history and culture and tradition as it has unfolded in the past and as it is evolving in the present.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Madam President. Two events that I have, I'm working with this weekend, one you've heard about already. I just want to highlight the Health Safety Fair that I'm having in my district at Laurel Plaza Park from 11:00 to 3:00. Similarly, want to invite you to Valley Pride event that is going to be happening at CBS Radford Studios from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And I just want to encourage everyone to support these great organizations and events.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Couple things as well. Tomorrow on Saturday, the Northeast Police Station, which serves Mr. Villagosa, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Labange, myself, on San Fernando Road will be having its annual open house. We encourage people to come by in the morning, be from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. It's always great stuff for family, good opportunity to interact with the Los Angeles Police Department Northeast Division. Also, tomorrow, we will be having a festival at the city's newest library, the Edendale Branch, which opened less than a month ago. All afternoon, we're going to have bands and local folks from Echo Park there, activities for kids, crafts, things like that, and a great chance to show off the city's newest and one of the most beautiful libraries as well. So stop by anytime from noon to 5:00 tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to say on Sunday is the AIDS Walk, which the city of Los Angeles will have a team there, and it's wonderful that it will start in the city of West Hollywood that walk in through Los Angeles and back to raise money to help fight AIDS and AIDS awareness. So the AIDS Walk this Sunday, all of welcome, on San Vicente, just south of Santa Monica Boulevard in city of West Hollywood originates, and then a great walk for a great cause. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
And again, I want to announce and invite everybody who's listening to the Grand Avenue Festival this Sunday on Grand Avenue. The street will be closed off. There will be a lot of low-cost, wonderful food and free entertainment. So please bring your families and please come.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several announcements on Saturday. The Enterprise Community Oversight Committee will have their 10-year anniversary meeting 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Watts Civic Center at 10221 Compton Boulevard at 103rd Street. Also on Saturday, we have the Hobart Block Club Cleanup at 4103 Southwestern. And the Paradise Baptist Church on Saturday will celebrate its 60th anniversary at 6:00 p.m. And then also on Saturday, we have at noon the USC-Arizona game at the Coliseum. Also, a Rock the Vote campaign at La Mert Park at October 16th, at 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. at La Mert Park in the 8th District. And then Sunday, October 17th, the Pilgrim United Baptist Church celebrates its 96th anniversary.
All right, any other announcements? Are there adjourned tributes? All right, could I ask everyone to please rise for adjourned tributes? Could we please rise? Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Arthur Andrade, who is the father of Robert Andrade, who many of us know, in the CAO's office, a senior analyst there. He passed away on October 7th, 2004. He was 82 years old, a World War II decorated veteran of the United States Marine Corps, which Robert said he thought was the best of all of the Corps, of course. He fought in Terrara, Roy Namura, and in Saipan, where he was injured and almost killed. And Robert shared a story that the family legend is that when he was evacuated during World War II from the front line, injured, delirious, he kept saying, "You can't kill this Mexican. You can't kill this Mexican." He was born and raised in Watts. He lived most of his life, the rest of his life, in Southgate. Arthur Andrade died on Thursday, October 7th, at the age of 82. He was another of the greatest generation who took great pride in his family and in his country. He leaves a large number of stepchildren and grandchildren in Southgate and is survived by Adrian Andrade, attorney-at-law, Viviana Andrade, vice president at Maldef, Adele Andrade, Stadler, candidate for Alhambra School Board, and Robert Andrade that I mentioned before. May he rest in peace and our sympathies to the family.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Gruel.
Well, this one's a hard one for me today. Last night, Dean found out that his brother had passed away by a heart attack at the age of 44. Couple weeks ago, he'd had a heart attack, and they thought he was going to recover. And it's particularly hard for Dean because he lost his younger brother at the age of 28, and without any siblings. He traveled this morning to tell his mother in person to help in her grieving, and so I hope that you'll send prayers to Dean and our entire family. And only the way you know my husband does. He left this morning, and I said, "Would you mind if I adjourned in memory of Scott?" And he said, "Sure." And this was actually about 2:00 in the morning, and I fell asleep and said goodbye this morning at 4:00 when he left. And I found next to our bed that he had written something about his brother. This is "In Memory of Scott Lyon Schramm." He was born on March 29th, 1960. He was a person of grand yet gentle spirit, one whose passions and life ran deeply and richly, possessed of a purity in his love of nature, a good friend to many, a loving brother, son and uncle, possessed of a tremendous and unique sense of humor with a keen sense of observation of people from all walks of life. Dean said that it would give Scott particular pleasure to know that he was so remembered in the chambers of the Los Angeles City Council. He's survived by his mother, Susan Schramm's father, Paul Schramm, his brother, Dean Schramm, his sister-in-law, Wendy Gruel, and his wonderful nephew, Thomas Schramm, who is named after Dean's other brother as well. So I hope that you will send your prayers and thoughts to Dean and our entire family.
Thank you. We'll make that all members. Mr. Perry, and Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Elizabeth Andrew Hitt, who is a mother, wife, grandmother, not only to her own children, but to many children within the 8th District. She was married to her husband, William, since 1953. They had three children. One preceded her in death, Michael. She was born in Monroe, Louisiana, in 1932. She moved to the city of Los Angeles in '53, where she became a member of the Divine Missionary Temple Baptist Church in '72, where she was a deaconess. She passed away at the age of 72, September 18th. Funeral services were September 28th at the Inglewood Cemetery and Martruary. She leaves the host of relatives. And then also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Roy Eugene Ward Jr., who is the son of Dale Huff, the senior deputy to supervisor, Yvonne Burke. Mr. Ward passed away of heart failure after a brief stay at Mission Community Hospital in Panorama City. His funeral service will be held 10:00 a.m. tomorrow at the Penn U Missionary Baptist Church. All correspondence and condolences should be directed to 868 Medbrook Street Carson. He's survived by his mother and father and two siblings.
Thank you. Any other tributes? Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm sure this is a little bit out of order, but I just wanted to say, on behalf of all of us here, Wendy, we all express our condolences, and I'm sure at the same time, each and every one of us thinks that way. I think we're all equally blown away by how none of us knew today you have been so strong, so poised. Very few of us had any idea, and so just a real tribute to your inner strength, we all send our love and condolences.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.